The October tenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Campbell Plan Commission. I'm Adam Buckbinder. I'm chair for this evening. Mr. Kirkland, please call the role.
Commissioner Davis.
President.
Commissioner Astraski. Commissioner Astraski. Commissioner Cray.
Here.
Commissioner Capcar. Commissioner Vice Chair Scissor.
Here.
Chair Buckbinder. President. Thank you very much. Before we go any further, does Community Development Director have any communications agenda modifications or postponements?
Do not.
Thank you. Brings us to oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for individuals wishing to address the planning commission on matters. We have five minutes, but the commission may not take any action on. Open public hearing.
Sorry to interrupt. I just want to make sure the minutes are not on your agenda for adoption.
Oh, there. I'm doing this the wrong order. I am terribly sorry. I just, I'm winging it here. Post-public hearing briefly. Has everyone had a chance to review minutes? We're sorry about that. Does anyone have any notes on it?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Second. Please have a vote.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Cray.
Aye.
Vice Chair Scissor.
Aye.
Chair Buckbinder.
Aye. Thank you. Now, this is the portion of the meeting where any member of the public may address the commission on an item not on the agenda. We may not take any action, say, but you may have five minutes. Open the public hearing again. Does anyone want to speak on an item not on the agenda? Anyone online? Post-public hearing. All right. That brings us to item two on the agenda, which is P L N twenty twenty-three dash one fifty-five study session on housing overlay districts and related amendments. I, Stephen, is going to give us our presentation. I'll start. Pretty quickly over to Steve. So thanks for your attention tonight, commissioners. We know this was a pretty dense report, but we're here to walk through it. Any questions you have? Broadly speaking, you'll remember back in April, we had adopted the general plan of housing elements with the V I R and its objective standards. In our housing element, we have a lot of ambitious policies and programs to help housing and affordable housing development in the city. Staffs are starting to work on those programs, and this is probably one of the first slew of programs that you're going to see. So given they're on similar timeframes, we're bringing them to in one package. But generally, what you'll see tonight are tools that will help support affordable housing development or streamline affordable housing development or incentivize affordable house development. Broadly speaking, there's one set of tools that Steve will talk about affordable housing overlay zone. It's sort of akin to a local density bonus program where the city can decide how to incentivize more affordable housing of a certain type and decide what sort of sweeteners or incentives in addition, above and beyond what you normally get in our density bonus, like to offer developers, affordable house developers that provide those additional things the city is looking for. And then two, as required by state law and also in our housing element, we are required to rezone certain properties allowed by right for affordable house development. City has some discretion on what property should be rezoned, and tonight we'll talk to a little bit about what principles you like or what's important to the city and where you would allow by rights. Broadly speaking, these are kind of going back to the housing element days. We'll be presenting items and looking for your feedback. Talked a little bit with Chair Buckbinder on the format. We were proposing we would break it off into bite-biteable chunks, as you'd say. So one would be, Steve will present on the affordable housing overlay zone, stop if there's any public comments, receive that and ask questions. At that point, we have some, some key policy questions that we'd like you to dig into and get your feedback. Then we go into part two and three, which are the reuse overlay and by right overlay against same format presents, stop. Members of the public want to buy comments, you can ask questions and then deliberate on your feedback on these items. So with that, I think we've covered generally, these are the housing element programs that we're focusing on. With that, I'll turn it over to Stephen to start with the affordable housing overlay zone.
Iterate. The reason all three of these housing element overlays are being brought forward for you tonight is given the similarities in the program requirements, like we read in the packet, but also the timeline. So the housing element, which was adopted earlier this year, called for all three of these to be made prepared, lead by the end of this year. And again, just tonight's purpose is not, we're not making a decision. It's a study session, so we're just looking for that initial feedback and direction if we're able to take and refine the overlays and the consideration of all the fire, fire division. So as just mentioned by Rob, the intent of an affordable housing overlay zone, it's typically used to establish a local state density bonus program. Usually the best way of characterizing it. In development of an affordable housing overlay zone, it generally involves identification of areas where it will apply as well as the identification of specific policy objectives, because things the city wants to achieve. And incentives, things you'd offer in exchange for developer meeting those specific policy objectives. It was also, the affordable housing overlay zone was also mentioned several times in the development of the general plan of housing element as a possible tool, which could be used to protect the city's maximum height limit of seventy-five feet as well as helping the city develop housing, which meets the needs of special needs populations like veterans, senior housing, et cetera. So in the report, we do discuss three key policy considerations, which we're looking for your feedback on tonight. The first is whether or not the affordable housing overlay zone should be designed to compete with or complement state density bonus law, which we'll go over in a little bit more detail here in a second. The second is, what are exactly our local priorities? What are the most important things for the city to preserve or to protect? And what will the city be, what should or can the city offer up in exchange? Is it really trade-offs? And lastly, where in the city should the affordable housing overlay apply once we, once it's established? So the first topic, should the affordable housing overlay zone be designed to compete with or complement state density bonus law? Generally, competitive program forces developers to choose between a city, the local city program and state density bonus law. And to clarify one point on this, state density bonus law will always be presented as an option. So the developer doesn't have to choose, they have their own elect, whether or not they want to pursue the city's program, which is why it's critical that the city's program be competitive, that we make sure that we include enough sweeteners or incentives that they would opt to choose if they're on a core with our program over necessarily state density bonus law. Now, a truly competitive program is saying, you're really deciding to forego a state density bonus in exchange for all of the acceptance and suites and acceptance under the local program. As a result, as a pro of this approach, it generally can allow community to have greater discretionary, greater control and predictability over project outcomes. But because state density bonus laws already so generous already, it's very difficult to be competitive because they already get so, so many concessions, waivers, developments. You're really only being able to offer those since which states density bonus law doesn't already offer. It also requires frequent maintenance. That state density bonus law has been amended every single year for the last several years. If you did it, if you created a truly competitive program, you'd need to ensure that your program is keeping up with state density bonus laws. So every year you'd be looking at like annual updates. On a complimentary model, which is really what staff is recommending tonight, it provides, it's really stacking. You pretty much get the same benefits you would otherwise get under state density bonus law. But the local program would be providing additional benefits in exchange for meeting one or more local priorities. You're, you're staying very focused on meeting just one or two or three local priorities to critical to the community and identifying appropriate incentives that may be offered in exchange. The city height limit is one example. We have other examples that you'll cover on another slide. So the pros of this approach is it's easier to be competitive. You don't have to compete with all of state density bonus law. Only there's a couple of things that you're asking for. Also, you're obviously not getting updated programs frequently, so there's lower maintenance obligations, and hopefully it's achieving city priorities. So just in terms of local priorities and potential incentives the city may consider in exchange, this is really the trade-offs. So in, in the development of both general plan and the housing element, the city had discussed the city's maximum height limit as well as that special meeting needs of special needs populations like veterans and seniors as potential priorities. We had also heard at various points in time during the development of the city's multifamily development design standards, which is the objective design requirements that apply to multifamily and new mixed-use development projects, that it was very important to the community to also protect single-family residences by, through the establishment of adjacency standards. Just things like the wedding cakeing, the stepping back of buildings, providing adequate separation and setbacks to those property lines for single families in play. But also preserving and protecting the city's requirement for mixed-use development, particularly in the downtown. These are things which could otherwise be waived under state density bonus law. Just as a list of incentives, some of these are actually identified in the housing element itself as in the development of this program that we should be considering, such as increased density or intensity of projects reduced or waived, deferred or waived permit fees. Some of these were also identified by staff separately, just part of this report is potentially, once we've established a, an affordable housing fund or linkage fee, potentially prioritize the use of funds from that program towards housing developers who meet our local priorities. We could also allow for, and this is a somewhat complicated topic, but it's the selection of which units in a project are going to be the low market rate housing units. Right now, the city's inclusionary housing ordinance requires it to be a reasonable dispersment of those units across the same mix and composition across the product site. Developers would generally rather choose to locate their B M R units and the locations that are less attractive for market rate purchase. This could be up against the highway. They could be the smaller units or less attractive units. So that could be something that the city could consider as a concession. Ministerial or by right permit processing. City has a utility undergrounding ordinance, so they would waive the requirements of that ordinance. The city could offer funding in support of, maybe not entirely funding of, fundage improvements, it'd be like a better sidewalk and other financial incentives such as, like smart passes, P K, and like. So just to help visualize how a city program might be structured to compete with state density bonus law. What you see here on the screen is an example between a, a, what state density bonus law would other, would typically allow and how a local program might be competitive with that. So even under state density bonus law, there are certain concessions being asked for. In this particular scenario, developer would be required to provide ten percent of the units in a project affordable to lower income households. The city could similarly require ten percent of those units to be available to lower income households, but also require that the, that the project comply with the city's maximum height limit. In exchange, in addition really to those incentives, the benefits that a developer would receive under state density bonus law, this being a twenty percent density bonus, parking standards and limited waivers. Instead of where, under state density bonus law, you'd only receive one incentive, a local program could provide two on-menu incentives. These would be where we specifically say, instead of an unknown incentive, we'll specifically provide a waiver to the undergrounding requirements or incentive for a ministerial by right permit processing, that's a permit which should go effectively straight to our building department for views of the zoning plans. So the third and final, so under this part, under the affordable housing overlay zone, the last key policy consideration that we flagged is really where in the city should the affordable housing overlay zone apply? One tax, state density bonus law apply citywide, so the city could obviously consider applying the affordable housing overlay zone the same way, applying it citywide as well. And alternatively, we could consider aligning it with existing planning boundaries, such as the, say, the future Hamilton Avenue precise plan boundary, Winchester Boulevard master plan, downtown development plan, you could pick or applying the A H O S to specific land uses. These would be like cities higher density or transport oriented, mixed-use land designations that were established as part of the general plan update. So you could select and say, we want to keep these ones in play and these particular land use designations that's single family out of the picture. To that point, staff is recommending that we consider to, to get to help hope, understanding that affordable housing overlay zone is intended to achieve additional affordable housing units to try to have a very broad applicability program by climate citywide, but to potentially avoid adverse impacts to single family areas. We seek to accept those areas and allow those, those areas of the community, say, say Santa Moss or areas that are single family to be addressed by other housing element programs, such as S M T. She'll turn it up the other separate consideration in the future. So with that, well, that, that brings us to the end of part one. So we're going to go ahead and stop for public comments. And then we'll turn it back to the planning commission for questions and feedback, and these are the key, the three key policy considerations up here on the screen.
Okay. Thank you for that presentation. I'd just like to, for you public comments, just like to thank staff for really moving on this very quickly. I've seen a lot of news about other cities like turning down or delaying programs they promised to do. I really appreciate the work that's been put into this. Very excited to get started on this. All of the public comment. Anyone here like to speak on this item? Online? Okay. Close a couple of comment. So, oh, we've got plenty of room for people to hide. Let's go one, two, three, four.
Just questions and then.
Yes. I think questions for staff and then we'll do another round of our opinions.
Um, thank you. The on-menu incentives that we offer, would those need to be available to every single property, the same set, or could we be customizing them? If we like realize this one property, okay, we really want that one to do frontage and undergrounding, but then other properties, we want to waive parking and, like, could we, could we alter the menu on a per-property basis or does it need to be consistent citywide?
I would generally refrain from doing the site-by-site application of a, of a policy like an affordable housing overlay zone in a way. What you could do is you could customize a list of specific incentives that may be offered to certain density ranges. So you'd say, within these land use designations, there's between fifty-seven and seventy-five, the following options, menu options are available in the lower rung or lower set of, or in certain areas. Within a certain area plan, boundaries, certain incentives may be offered. That certainly offer those as approaches that may be considered, but I wouldn't, I would try to veer away from doing a site assessment of every property you definitely have on the ground.
Makes sense. Um, special needs housing, is that, I don't know the background of the city council request, is that about who can purchase the houses or is that like actually building like different types of housing for people with special needs? Like what, what is the background on that?
Yeah, that's, that's the gen, so generally speaking, special needs housing is meeting the special needs of this population. So it could be something like a, providing a greater percentage of accessible units in a housing development project might, might need to special needs populations with disabilities. Mental or physical disabilities, that's an example. Other types of housing might be needs of other groups. So, and I could provide one more example to say a veteran community might have some type of onsite supportive service to deal with certain traumas or experiences that they might have had. I'm not the best example, but.
Do those also get limited then? Like there's some sort of like verification of like who can purchase those properties that? I'm like, yes.
I, I would say that the clearest example of that would be with senior housing projects that they will generally be age restricted.
Yes.
I, I, it would be depend, I don't know, depending on how the development is set up, whether or not we can restrict units to special needs populations. It would be something we would explore in greater detail. That's something we'd like to pursue.
And for the menu incentive about funding, support or financial incentives, I know we've like had budget issues as a city. Where would that money come from?
Well, some of the options that you're presenting as a financial incentives would be deferred or reduced permit fees, which.
Okay.
So if you defer it, it's just a time of collection. But yeah, we'd absolutely have to evaluate the fiscal impacts. But yeah, we'd absolutely have to evaluate the fiscal impacts and implications of any particular incentive that has a financial consequence. We've got an upcoming report. Got it. And max height being like first on the list of things the city cares about, like? Maximum height limit was established by a voter referendum back in the 1980s, it was 1986. Thereabouts. So it was, it was a topic of significance to the community of Campbell back in the 1980s. Okay. And so it had been a carried discussion point going forward, the development of housing element, these new plan for densities. How do we respect the, the interests of the voters that had established that referendum all those many years ago? Got it. Uh, super helpful. Last one, is there any California city locally that is doing a competitive housing, affordable housing overlay? Just for reference, I think I got a lot of examples of ones that are toward or abandoning it, but like is there any local city that's actually doing it? So yeah, the examples that were provided as an attachment, I think the majority of those surveyed that were responsive have started to or have already modified their affordable housing overlay zones to become complementary models. There are, I could probably provide examples of competitive programs where they had, and again, they're not well used. Many of the cities that which we were surveying, we're trying to say, okay, which programs not only have been adopted, it's one thing to have an adopted ordinance. Another thing to have one that's actually being practically used by developers chosen in favor of an adopted ordinance. So those which we were surveying were those which had actually responded indicating not only do we have one, but yes, it's in fact used, we have two examples, three examples of that in the last two to three years. Is why you're kind of seeing that, that skewing perhaps because those, those cities which have responded, nobody, yeah, we have one, but nobody's used it. Got it. Great. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Just a note, the tables in the, in the packet detail the competitive versus complementary, like Gray says, they've done that, like pretty much lay out what you were saying, right?
Correct.
Yeah, thanks Stephen. Thanks for that report. Yeah, you did a really good job of putting a lot of stuff understandable. I do appreciate that. I actually have a, I just have, I obviously have more comments, just a couple of questions and really kind of a couple of different angles on what Commissioner Fields actually just asked you and I said so much stuff over the last couple of years on housing and what was our priorities. I, I actually did have the same thought. But I know it was a big item, but maybe this is a question for Bill, but I'm still not clear on the way the state law is now. And we have a 75-foot height limit that was voted on by the people in Campbell. But according to the state law now, the developer can't exceed that 75-foot height. Is that correct?
That is correct. It's either an incentive concession or even possibly a waiver.
Okay, all right.
You know, if they comply with the density bonus requirements.
Yeah, I, I guess that could be a really good incentive in certain areas, maybe not everywhere, but anyway.
Yeah, and if I may add on that point. On past, it was somewhat ambiguous, under state density bonus law, they've made that sound clear. Specifically added reference to voter initiatives being.
That's good to know. Yeah, yeah. That's a good item for us, I think. And then Commissioner Fields was also asking about the fees a little bit. I know we have the fees and there are a lot of incentives, but I, I I don't know how much those fees are, but I, do we know citywide? That would be a big issue for the city of Campbell's finances if we start waiving all these fees, would that become a budget issue for us?
I mean, we'd have to evaluate again the specific fees we're waving. I mean, there's different ways of structuring a fee program. Present in the report were kind of three options. One would be reducing or waiving a permit, right? This is kind of a option. Another approach the city may take is when we do take a development impact fee, so somebody opts out the fee out of a unit that otherwise we can provide. The city would be using revenues which they've collected, which is a special purpose fund. They could then use to help buy down or help support the development of a political housing project.
I think I had, Commissioner, great. So, so Campbell, I mean. Typically with larger, more robust programs done to help affordable housing, which is hard. Let's get in the game, that the cities will actually fund, especially in terms of affordable projects and subsidies. At this point, the city doesn't have much funding, we're coming back with tools to provide the funding. For cities that typically don't have a affordable housing fund, if you do have a hundred percent affordable projects, you can subsidize. Many cities do go ahead and just subsidize the fees since it reduces the overall cost. So that's not that, that's not atypical, especially for.
I'll also add, City Campbell, we don't have that many existing development impact fees. One of the only notable fees that we do have is a park and roof fee. City's program is structured in such a way that we collect that in roof fee even on affordable housing units of the project. So it's, I don't want to say it's atypical, it's less common in jurisdictions, that typically that's a fee that you would first let go, that of those units, the market rate units you collect in roof fee, but the affordable units wouldn't. That's something we could also look at.
Yeah, just look at stuff there. One other area that comes up all the time, and I, this is like, I know I'm getting into the weeds and there's probably no easy answer for this. When we're talking about incentives, and for some reason in projects that provide 15% of affordable below-market rate housing, they get a break. And then in some areas, then it was 20% in some cases. And how I saw in our, one of our reports in a different area of, I guess it was Mamal Park, at 25%, 25% of the, of the units are affordable. And they get the breaks, the developers get the breaks. So I and you talked about as one of the incentives to maybe look at higher density. So seems to me, I wonder if there's a way, if we could look into. You know? So what we're trying to do is make these project, I'm getting into that question here, but trying to, the question is, is there room to, for an incentive to say, you know, in a project of 50-plus units? You know, if at least 30% are below market rate, then we'll give you the breaks or as opposed to 25 units, you know, if it's 15%, is there a way to mess with the percentages? It still might enable a developer and a lender to make enough money to actually do a project, but the city would get more below-market rate housing.
I broadly say yes. I mean, there is a table, state density bonus law, which indicates specific level of affordability percentage that you would buy in exchange for certain percentage of density bonus that you just exchange. Cities program can certainly go a step further or a slightly higher percentage of affordability, getting, providing a slightly higher density bonus.
Well, yeah, that seems like something that we could put into our housing overlay zone. I just, I just assumed that the state had, you know, when, when they came up with the original laws, it was 15% and it was kind of like just a straight 15%. You can even do a roof in roof fee. But if 15% of all your units were affordable, then that was, then you get the break. And you know, how did they come up with 15%? And then you got, you know, 200-unit project versus the, you know, 20-unit project and still 15%. So to me, the, the, the economics of the whole deal of what still makes these projects palatable for a developer and a lender that can actually make them doable has always been very hazy to me, but that's not a question, but it leads to my final question, which is the incentives that we were mentioning, that you mentioned in your report, Stephen. Some of them seem pretty like a, possibly a big deal. Extra density, some of them seem, you know, waive underground utilities, which we're already waiving anyways. So some of them seem like a real small deal. But my question for you specifically is, if we run these incentives by our development community, community, and do we know if these are actually things that are would actually do something?
Great question. That's part of what our next steps are going to be on this. So based on feedback received from the planning commission and council. Trying to catch you kind of find the feedback and come up with a more crystallized list of specific incentives and concessions that may be considered and shop them to our great developers. We're excited for that.
Thank you. I'm all done. Thanks.
Some of what I was going to ask is covered, but, but first is regarding the potential incentives. So this list of aid that you have here. Are these incentives that, that developers normally would not necessarily get in accordance with state law? It's part of density bonus or whatever else. So that these are over and above any incentives?
The way that we would structure it? Generally, yes. And again, you do get a density bonus under state density bonus law. I would say on the first point, we're saying increased density. So we would be saying, taking that same people I mentioned earlier, going a step further. So by providing an even greater level of affordability requirement, you might get a density bonus in excess of what state density bonus law would otherwise provide. The reduced deferment or waive, waiving of fees is something that state density bonus law clearly does not allow for. Prior use of supportive funds, generally not the case, there are certain types of projects which could qualify for prior use of those funds. But the state density bonus law wouldn't command that by itself. Selection of BMR units, also not something that's offered, ministerial buy right permit processing, not unless in conjunction with some other law like SB 35. Waiving of underground requirements, it's an example. If they choose to use their concession that way, they could certainly do so. But then they'd be using their sole or maybe one only concession, or we might offer two in our program, just as examples.
All right. So for the most part, these are over. Yeah, going back to David's saying about, about, about picking and choosing depending on the elements, like you suggested maybe you could do it by density. Is it be possible to also do it by kind of the size of the, I mean, it seems to me that like undergrounding utilities, I don't really know a lot about, you know, where and when you want to do underground utilities, but it seems to me that if it was a small 10 or 20-unit parcel, you know, that maybe existing utilities are fine. If you're going to a 300-unit parcel, the underground utilities make a whole lot more sense. Is that one way that you could possibly differentiate?
I would say it is. I would say there is an economy of scale. I mean, a smaller project would generally benefit disproportionately or the waiving of undergrounding requirements compared to a large development project, given the number of units per building. So it generally helps smaller projects more. You could, you could approach it a different way rather than trying to identify this.
It also makes the, you know, if it's a bigger project that is going to be there for, having underground utilities makes it aesthetically more desirable, right?
Right. Yeah. I mean, some projects are required underground just to provide egress or ingress, fire department access. It might be a different approach that might be taken. So you could, you could specify to Commissioner Fields as commented earlier. Certain maybe density ranges, projects over, or even project unit counts, products up to X units can use that incentive or over Z. And maybe a different approach to be, again, I, I don't like the idea of going partial specific. You could take large swaths of the city, like if you're on image street, like those are important streets in the city.
Okay.
Where undergrounding is of paramount importance to the city to ensure that it be Hamilton and Baskin. The interior streets are of less local notoriety, less visibility, might be less important, less of a paramount importance to the city. So you're undergrounding.
Okay, all right. Although I, I think that's a good thing to look at. I, I, on the on the incentive numbers, you know, the one incentive by state law are suggesting two incentives. Is there a reason why we should only offer two incentives? It's two incentives seem like right in the door? Could we offer three incentives?
Yeah, I'd say that the program example you're seeing here on the screen is merely meant to be representative. It's very possible we might need to provide five, 10, 20 incentives, depending on exactly what additional concessions requirements we're asking.
So it seems to me that the one disadvantage of competing of complementary. Can't remember where that was. You had a disadvantage somewhere. The one, one disadvantage. It was the part where it said you could end up with cookie cutter. You could end up with cookie cutter, it's something else, right? If we, if we do which one? If, if we do complementary, then we are, we're, we're leaving ourselves open to developers putting up cookie cutter buildings and maybe some other kind of building, something else there.
Also articulated with.
With, with some of this stuff. So, so I guess my question is, is is practically speaking? Is that something that we feel would be a very likely thing to happen? If we went complementary, that we're leaving ourselves open? Or is there a way in which we can manufacture the way we're offering this to minimize that?
This kind of comes down to that list of, there was a very, I can't emphasize enough, there's a very thin margin between really what the city can offer between state density boost programs, already such a great program for developers to pursue. There's a thin margin where you'd be offering something above and beyond the city for financial point. Or otherwise would be willing to concede or give up in exchange for meeting certain priorities. Now, if the city were to identify, its highest priority is not maintaining, say, the height limit. But it was to ensure that there's a modulation of the building form. That's, that's the most important thing. Sure that cookie cutter development or articulated buildings are the priority. And that would be identified as that thing that you're looking for in exchange for utility undergrounding, whatever the incentive package is. Again, the more things you ask for, the more you need to give up in exchange. At some point, it's not a pencil for developer to say, I'm going to subject my project to all of those obligations and requirements. So let me jump in a little bit down the line, Stephen said. Okay, so today, so when these programs were first laid out years ago? How developers could you density about? The floor was much lower. And local cities could offer a lot of incentives to get people to provide more affordable housing or special needs. As Stephen has said, every year the floor has risen. So I'll just be honest, I'll tell the council the same thing, is it'll be very hard for this program to compete with state density. Give them the ability, waivers, concessions, developers, once they're in that program, they I would say it's all powerful, but you can ask for a lot for city, no questions asked. Now, the, the one thing in addition to potentially eking out a small area where you might provide more incentives, is a lot of developers want to work with the city. And if you establish these programs, what it really does is it tells a developer, here are the things that are important to the city that you provide, and here are the things that we want to protect. And often developers, if they see that, it's not a mystery as to what waivers they would ask for. They usually want to go through the process and not in adversarial way, but to work with the city. So not that they would absolutely use the program, but it declares to developers, when they shape their projects, if they want to work with the city, oftentimes it's very clear what's priorities.
So one of the general questions I have about this is, you know, we're talking about, we're talking about the 20%. We're talking about getting affordable housing. And so what we're trying to do, check if I'm wrong, is, is, is we're trying to encourage more BMR with market rate development. That, that they'll, they'll take, they'll do the 15% because of the in-lu, or they'll do 20%, they'll do 20%, even if they're not a reuse. You know, last, last, last cycles, guys, we have to use 20%, I guess, right? So, so this is what this whole exercise is about, is trying to get the developers to buy into, to, to take the density bonus so that we can get the affordable. We can get the affordable housing of 50 to 20%. I don't know if we've, have we picked a number? Are we pushing to 20%? Is that what we're trying to do?
I, I broadly say there is not a number set. So you need to find those local priorities.
Okay.
Provide an attraction out. So you could say the height is the priority or the percentage of affordability is the priority of the city. That's more important than the height. You need to stipulate, provide that direction out. If you're starting to, there are three overlays of consideration denied. 20% does not have direct correlation with what I'm talking about right now. It does provide for a different permit cap. It does provide for a different permanent capital.
And, and, and so, you know, this comes back to something that Commissioner Cray said about, about going higher. Affordable, I mean, affordable housing percentage. And I've mentioned this in the past, that, um. You know, getting, getting the fifteen or twenty percent, you know, based on the RENA. The RENA numbers, you can math. You can't get there. You can't get there unless you do. A number of hundred percent affordable housing projects. And it's actually a lot. So, you know, if you, if you actually calculate, do the math on it, say, even if we got all the market rate guys. To provide twenty percent. Of their market rate stuff, and we make the market rate number, which is whatever it is, twenty somewhat, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four hundred. Whatever it is. And you got twenty percent. Well, while affordable rate housing is fifty, is forty, is fifty, fifty-five percent of the RENA number. Okay, from moderate down to very low, if you take those numbers, it's, 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 it's over fifty percent of the total RENA number. Will never make the affordable housing numbers. By even maximizing out PMRs, which means. No simplistic theory, I mean, I know, it, 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 it means that we have to have a lot of fifty or a hundred percent affordable housing projects. And, and so my question is, why aren't we, or are we going to? Look at ways to pursue beyond the low market rate stuff for affordable housing? In some meaningful way to, because I believe that that's where we should be emphasizing. You know, people are going to build, uh, uh, market rate housing, and then we're, then we're going to get some BMR. But, you know, it's so hard to, we all know it's so hard to get the, um, uh, hundred percent affordable. Because it's usually nonprofits, you know, and, 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 um, and it doesn't, it doesn't pencil out for, for profit developers, right? So, so my take is, we can do all this, and we can all agree on this, but it doesn't solve the problem if we really believe we want to meet. If, if the emphasis is affordable housing, the emphasis is really affordable housing. Says on the slide. Then we're going to run, we're going to be, we're going to come up short. Unless we have some dramatic emphasis placed on effectively competing, and I know it's the competition. For the developers to build. You know, I, I came up with a number that said we're going to have to build in the next, uh, eight years, we're going to have to build. What, uh, a dozen one hundred percent affordable housing projects of a hundred units each. To meet, to, 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 to come close to our affordable housing numbers, if you factor in the BMR. So, so th- th- that's beyond the pale, I, I think, and so. My, my feeling is, th- this is fine to do this whole exercise, come up with answers, but I would like to see us place some emphasis on. And so my question is, is, is there another iteration here where we're going to look at, making it a question? Where we're going to look at going beyond this?
So I'll answer your question.
Alright.
So what you're seeing, if you read our housing, I mean, we have a hundred plus programs, and what you're seeing tonight is two, well, technically three tools out of that. And what the commissioning council will see over the next two years is multiple other tools coming. A lot of those are focused on building resources in the city to underwrite, support, subsidize, build affordable projects. Potentially using city land to subsidize, underwrite. So what you see tonight is one tool, but there are multiple tools in the city. If you wanted to focus on this tool, and you'd say that the priority of the city is, uh, for its special needs. Putting words in the commission's mouth, matter of things, what we need is a hundred percent for projects. Policy direction staff would be, as I think one is the city of the list that Stephen provided, is really focus on those a hundred percent. That's where staff will focus on the program.
I, I just don't think we have. We don't have time, you know, eight years is a short period. If we really want to see developments, it's going to happen sooner or later. That's all.
So, we'll go back around for discussion. So I want to ask, on page eleven, there's a question about being, quote, generous, uh, being a problem for a local density bonus program. So what, what's the bad outcome that we're worried about if we're too generous? So with the, I think the implication of what Jeff said, it's difficult to be. Adjudiced, and if you tend to be too generous, you could be offering up more than the city would otherwise need to make possible. So the, the disadvantage, I mean, I'm not saying that producing more affordable housing is necessarily a disadvantage. It could be offering up more financial incentives as an example, than is necessary to fund, to help support the project. Making it convert more, you just speak more affordable, if that's the, the concession or priority is being asked for and changed. To be, and you're, and that type of model, that's, 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 that's. So we might be inefficiently using our subsidy money base, right? That's. Okay, that makes sense. So, to be clear, um. Unless they're using SB thirty-five, or if it gets signed SB four twenty-three. Density bonus projects don't get ministerial approval, like they still have to go through discretionary process. Right. That sounds like a really, like, big incentive to be a co-offer still. Especially, like, people get cranky when you have special needs housing anywhere, or what, it's on our list, I, that's, that stuck out to me. Gets everything else here, if there's comments, so, um. Shall we do another round of our feedback? Thanks, Wayne.
Uh, just doing the questions in order, um, on the screen, I think complimentary makes a lot of sense, um, so. If you're a local priorities, I, I don't agree that max height is the top priority. I feel like having attended a lot of the, um, feedback sessions, right, as I joined the training commission. Curved for the community, like modulation felt like it came up over and over again. Max height, especially knowing that, you know, they couldn't just build something taller. Feels like not as key a priority to have first on the list, so I, I would love to see modulation on the list of priorities. And for trade-offs. Number one on the list was increased density. Wonder about, uh, as that's explored, like. Finding a way to preserve the intent of, you know, giving developers flexibility, but also not creating, like, robust boxes of six hundreds, but. Apartment complexes, so, um, my personal feeling is as much as possible, the new incentives could encourage. Modular apartments of varying sizes, but don't become these, like, monoliths. My example always is about the, or San Antonio, you know, there's like four ten-story rectangle. Just monolithic apartment complexes, like, not that, let's not do that, let's have something that is. Uh, incentive bias is on our menu, stuff that. Uh, has more modularity. Just, just, just to heat it down. Um, also aligned on the city's recommendation to have the, uh, map applied, citywide, it's a big town, it makes sense to me. Not make our already complicated zoning. Or complicated, and then, thank you for your answer to my question about, um. The menu per density, and then you think some degree of, like, per density adjustment could be helpful, like, what the new incentives are offered to. March, that's property versus, like, the smaller.
Thank you. Uh, Christopher Gray.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I pretty much agree with, with most of what Commissioner Field said, I, I, I have read the report. Couple times, it was a lot to, it was a lot to digest, but it was really pretty well done. Definitely side with the staff's recommendations on questions one and three. Make it complimentary, the state law already has so many things on it, and, uh. Yeah, affordable housing overlay zone should be citywide, other than single family homes, of course, so I think, I agree with the staff recommendation on those two items, without question. Develing the details on number two, uh. So, you know, I don't know, yeah, we're trying to get affordable housing actually built, and it's just a tough, tough time, I, uh. I was trying to remember, you know, those, those conversations we had, those many, many conversations, uh. And I think the seventy-five foot height limit is really important in a lot of areas. And maybe in all the three areas that we noted in terms of the reuse zones, the, uh. East of downtown, the, uh, area between Prun Yard and downtown, and downtown. And then the area I was most debating mentally was the west, the south Winchester area, but I think that's another area where the seventy-five foot height limit. Would really be embraced by, I can't, I can't, can't speak for everybody, would be embraced by Mike Cray, and I think it would be embraced by the city council and by the people of Campbell. Uh, but there's other areas where, you know, for, for the trade-off of, of a really solid number of. Low market rate housing units, we can, we could go higher, you know, I. For example, the Frye site, you know, just comes to mind, obviously, and I, I definitely agree with what Commissioner Sisler was saying, that we weren't going to need a good supply of a hundred percent. Affordable housing projects, uh, those are tough to get, but, uh. In terms of the incentives, that, you know, yeah, I would like to look at, you know, more density for more BMR, uh, I think that's, I think that, I think those trade-offs would work, and I think they'd actually work for above the seventy-five foot height limit in certain locations. Certain very limited locations, uh. You know, we talk about some of the other stuff, like I said, I think is pretty minor, you know, the undergrounding utilities, which we never do, the parking. The way that this is evolving, the parking is really going to be the developers deciding what makes their projects work, and that's the amount of parking that'll be put in. So I don't know how many, how much we could give them incentive-wise there, uh. And, you know, the fees, I, I, I'm a little leery, I don't want to get in, in financial troubles, Campbell's been so good financially, and we want to stay that way, but, you know. We give them a break, but I do agree with Commissioner Bookbinder, the ministerial permits on some of these approvals on some of these. I think would be a huge deal for some of these developers, and I think we could get there. And I think we're getting there, and I think, I think the, the staff report did spell out a lot of, a lot of good stuff, I, I, I like the, uh, really liked that report that went through all the other cities. Interesting what NML Park is doing, I do think it's pretty applicable to us, uh, you know, MLP, this and Tiburon, all the other cities, so, uh. Everybody's, everybody's trying to deal with this, and we're all trying to, to get more affordable housing built, and it's really hard, as we all know. The ones, the one area I would say, this is not on our agenda first, you know, where we're really, where we're really dropping the ball, the state dropped the ball, and now the cities are all dropping the ball. Is explaining to the, to the people, to the people of your city, why you need the higher density to get below market rate housing. People are just up in arms, oh, another big high rise is going, another big high density, oh my God, where's all the traffic going to go, you know, people don't want to ride their bikes to work. We, we really, I think, and I know it's one of our economic development items, but, uh, I think we got to, you know, I think the city of Campbell, and, and every city in our county. Has to do a much better job of explaining why we're doing this stuff and why it has to be done, so. That's my three cents, thanks. Yeah, I, I, I'm in agreement with a lot of what Commissioner Sisler said, I, I, I support a complimentary. Methodology. Makes sense to me. The, the max, the max height thing, I mean, I think that, you know, my, 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 my general feeling about maximum height is, I think we can go. We can go higher in a lot of places, and, uh, I think there's a caveat, I think there's a caveat about setbacks. You could go, uh, really high on some of the corridors, as long as, as long as we have some way of dealing with, um. Setbacks residential areas, you know, a lot of our corridors, but up against, uh, right up against residential area. That are, uh, one or two-story homes, and if you put a, it's not to say you can't put a ten or twelve-foot, a ten or twelve-story building, uh, there. But, um, but it, it, the, the impact to the, uh, the adjacent residential area would be of concern to me, in those instances. It'd be much better, obviously, if you, you could keep it down to the, you know, six or eight-story kind of level. But we have, as, as, as Commissioner Bookbinder has often mentioned, is we, we do have a, a twelve-story. Building in the.
Westing Adams?
Westing Adams, so, uh, at, at Hamilton and Winchester. The, the one caveat about that, though, Adam, is that if you look at the surrounding, what surrounds it is that it, it has a huge setback from. Uh, residential areas, it's, it's, uh, it's, on one side is, 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 is a, is a major corridor, on another side, there's a commercial area. Other side, there's a, a church, and then the last, the backside, there's a, there's a huge setback to, um, actually multi, multi-unit apartment house. So, so it's not, it's not overshadowing a s- single-family home residence, so it actually makes perfect sense to be there. And I, I think there's plenty of other places that, that a building that tall could be, um, in, in Campbell, so I, I, I think, um. Yeah, I don't want to see, you know, I don't want to see. I don't want to see an example of that thing that they, they said they were going to do at San Francisco on the, on the Pacific side, I don't know if anybody saw that, where. It's over, it's over, uh, off of, uh, off of the Pacific Coast Highway on the west side of town, where it's all, it's all those slung single-family homes. And somebody who's going to put in a, a forty or fifty-story skyscraper, supposedly. And I don't know if it was a joke, uh, for real, but, but it, it, it's, it's, it's really totally silly.
What? It was kind of both.
It was kind of both, so, so, um. But, you, you know, I, again, I think there's certain places on our corridors, especially on our corridors, where taller buildings, um, can be, um. Can be suitable, and, and, and we, and, and I'll just eat our D, so, um. I, I'm not, uh, I, I think the one, you know, one exception for height is, is, is downtown. I would like to maintain the downtown, uh, because it's such, it's, it's, it's centerpiece of our city, um. The quaintness of our city and, and, and raising heights in downtown to me is, is a prob, is problematic. Uh, I think we should go citywide on this. I think the only question about the fees, like, uh, Commissioner, uh, Cray said, is how it impacts our budget. I don't know if the fees are, are, that we would normally get, gain from, i- if we were to let, waive all the fees, whether that would impact our budget. Obviously, an analysis that has to be made, but if it's, if it's a relatively small number, um, then, then, and that, and that's a true incentive, uh. To developers, and then that's what we should be doing. The only other thing I had was on the list of, of incentives. Permitting developers to select the location type of BMR housing units in their projects, I, I would be opposed to that. If the present state law says, says that it should be distributed, uh, uh, around the development, right? So that you, uh, I think, uh, the, the first time I ran into that was the, uh. Oxnard, is that Oxnard Street? It's the one down by eighty-five where there's twenty-eight. It was early in my career here, uh, the development that's being developed at, at eighty-five in Baskin. Mozart, Mozart, not Oxnard, Mozart, so, so they have, uh, like twenty-eight very. So, so they have, uh, like twenty eight very, fairly expensive. Families, uh, single family homes, its own, own private little park. And they're putting in three, two or three, um, low market rate units. And they have to be typical of the rest of the units in terms of, of size and. Style and be distributed. And that makes perfect sense to me. Um, I don't think you want to have a big development and then you have all the. Low, that low end people over there, okay? Uh, I, I think that, that has a, has a societal implication. That's not what we're trying to do there. I mean, what we're trying to do is, is, you know, with BMR is, is allow people to, to be in places where they're normally can't afford them. And, and, and kind of integrate the world. So I would be, I would be opposed to that particular one. So that would, to me, we, we should cross that line. We should just go with the state law on that one. I think that's all I have.
Thank you. I forgot a question earlier. I'm sorry. This is for the city attorney. Does AB four ninety one of twenty twenty one include us allowing custom BMR units? I don't expect you to know that off the top of your head, but I looked it up. It says, a mixed income multifamily structure shall not isolate the affordable housing units within that structure to a specific floor or area on a specific floor. It's called the four door bill, or it's, uh, about two years ago. Think that we may not be able to do that.
I, I do know developments having done, so I don't know exactly how they find it valid. I, I think it's, if you could read it again, I think that prohibits you from isolating them to a particular floor.
Or a area on a specific floor.
Right. And I think in the circumstances that I'm aware of, it's tended to concentrate them in a particular type of development. So say a mixed product environment where you have apartment building and townhomes. If disperse them equitably amongst the apartment building, but not necessarily amongst the for sale market rate townhome product. So I would have to review it in greater detail, obviously, but, um.
I guess we'd have to tread carefully with that.
Yeah, application of it. Especially in use of even state density bonus law to kind of circumvent some of those requirements at times, so.
I, I don't have an answer for you right now. That's okay. I just wanted to raise it as a, as an issue. It's AB four ninety one in twenty twenty one. I agree with everybody else that a complementary approach seems better. It looks like attempts to use a competitive approach just have fallen flat in places that have tried it. And it seems like a lot of work for something that's just kind of getting. I, I think it might be worthwhile to have different approaches in walkable and non-walkable areas. We went to the trouble of already splitting the city into walkable and non-walkable. We might have different goals for those places. I would, I would actually ask, like, an incentive might be to lower the affordability requirements, which would make more projects pencil. See, uh, just for context, um, when the height limit was passed thirty seven years ago, the vote was, I looked this up. The vote was fifty point nine percent to forty nine point one percent. It passed by a margin of about two hundred votes. It's measure N nineteen eighty six and I will quote from, uh, from the city count, uh, sorry, the, uh. Plan and Commission meeting where it was discussed, for example, Wesley Manor will continue to upset the balance of its neighborhood until other tall buildings are built nearby. It is thirty seven years later, there are no new tall buildings next to it. It remains the only tall building anywhere near that intersection. The balance remains upset. See. I, I think the main thing we should focus on here is getting things built, like obviously. Properly using our own resources, especially since the city's funding is very limited for this kind of thing is, is a priority. But like, I don't think we're in danger of being overrun by clutter buildings. Like the danger we have is that dirt lot that the. City delayed getting a project dealt with until I think the financing fell through. Maybe the Cresley is going to build it, maybe it's not, but it's currently a dirt lot. Like that's, that's the old card. And in terms of increasing. BMR percentages, um, like I would rather have fifteen percent of a hundred and thirty percent nothing. And that, that's like a real problem. You get a few bump up the affordable percentages because San Francisco did that. And they had a lot fewer projects to be financed. I'd be really cautious about doing that. I understand that, uh, there's a lot of concern about articulation at height, but I think our first priority should be getting our numbers. It's affordable housing overlay zone. We should try and produce affordable housing. So we could, in theory, get our BMR numbers by just making a lot of market rate housing with a smaller inclusionary percentage. That probably wouldn't multiply out without making a lot more housing. And we would probably want to make things more appealing for a, uh. For a hundred percent affordable developer. With that, like I, I really encourage, I think, um, ministerial approval is got to be one of the most powerful things we can offer. Uh, I think it's a really, really good idea and that would. Probably make, cause I know especially with a hundred percent affordable housing, the timeline is really, they have to line up a whole bunch of things. And if they don't have to wait for city permitting, then I have to go through discretionary process. They can just get it approved. This is part of why SB thirty five has been so useful is that it gets you, um, a by right permitting. So I, I really encourage that to be like the main incentive that we offer. I think that covers, oh, and, uh, yeah, I, I agree. It should apply to all, everything except for R one, which we cover by the programs. If we split, we should be walkable and non, but I definitely don't think we should have another map with complicated. Slice everything, slice into tiny, tiny pieces. To the extent that we can keep it simple and universal, we should keep it simple and universal for the city. Those are my opinions.
Can I just come up? Yeah, I just, I just wanted to clear, I, I agree with you on the, on the, you know, the. The, uh, for profit developers. Our developers pushing them higher on, on affordability is. Yeah, I, I think the fifteen percent, I'm only speculating, but I think the fifteen percent probably came about because they did the numbers. And they negotiated with developers, the developer said, we get this much density or we can handle fifteen percent. That's probably, whenever that was done, that's probably how it came about. But, but my emphasis is that we got to get people who aren't trying to make profit, right? You got to get the business and the loads. The other nonprofit guys to, uh, take a real hard look at Campbell. Now, our problem is we don't have, we got two properties. We got two sites. So we got, we got, we got to figure out some way of finding more sites.
Well, this applies to the whole city. This doesn't just apply to our opportunity sites.
No, but what I'm saying for nonprofits, usually the way nonprofits are encouraged.
Oh, they have city donated sites, yes.
The city donates sites, so, so if, I don't know what other ways there are unless there's money somewhere that we can, you know, ask Google. Hey, how about Facebook?
If SB four gets passed.
So that, that's, that's my. We have to look, we have to look for that.
Yeah, and to that, to that end, you know, we could offer extra incentives for. A hundred percent BMR developers or for nonprofit developers. I'm not sure if we can split it by profit, nonprofit, but certainly. More generous incentives for, I, state density bonus law already does that, but we go above and beyond some, some. Especially the thing with being able to waive parking fees for, um. For BMR units, which sounds like. A pretty reasonable thing to do. I know that we need money for parks, but. If that would help incentivize things, especially, you know, to make our program look better, but honestly, I think that. I think that ministerial permitting will be like a huge plus. Hey, do they have anything else on that? Right, the staff feel like they got enough?
Congratulations, you got through part one.
Part two and three are kind of together.
Part two and three are combined, so. Do you'd like to take a break or if not, stick and cut through it?
Sure, uh, we will reconvene in, uh, at forty seven past or. All right. So as mentioned before the break, uh, we're moving on to part two. We've luckily combined part two with part three and at the conclusion of which we'll stop for public comment. Questions and feedback from the commission. So the, uh, the first section we cover is the reuse overlay. So this is a, the state law essentially requires the city to establish a buy right. Or ministerial permit process for any sites, a number of sites in the city reused from prior housing elements. When at least twenty percent of the housing units are made affordable to lower income households. Specifically, the reuse site inventory needs to include non vacant sites, which were used in the prior housing element. And vacant sites from two or more consecutive planning periods. So in total, there, there's sixty sites that fall into the reuse overlay. One of which is a, a vacant site, not that it makes a substantive difference at this point. There is no discretion to the city in the selection or identification at this point as to where sites are included in the reuse overlay. So staff will be, uh, proceeding with, uh, a mapping layer to indicate that these are going to be the sites we see reflected here on the bottom right. Will be included in the city's reuse overlay, create a, uh, corresponding tax amendment or zoning ordinance to implement the same. So on this particular section, staff is simply recognize, recognizing that the plan and commission acknowledged the requirement. But as part of part three, separately consider these sites, which have been included in the, in the reuse overlay. As possible sites for overlap and where we do have a little bit more discretion in the buy right overlay, which I'll talk about next. So, uh, the city, so the third overlay, which we have for discussion tonight, um, is, is largely a consequence for the city of not meeting its compliance deadline of January thirty first, twenty twenty three. To have not only an adopted housing element, but one that's also certified by HCD. Uh, as just a general note, there had not been a single city in Santa Clara County which met the compliance deadline. So we weren't alone. Uh, as a result of not meeting the compliance deadline, the city was required to include a program. Uh, program H three E from the housing element, which requires the city to rezone for lower income housing shortfall. Which essentially allows for a buy right permit processing of the city's regional housing, uh, needs shortfall. It's a little bit complicated how you get there. Uh, we have a table here on the screen which is showing the math. Broadly speaking, you take the, the city's obligation to the six cycle data. In both a very low and low income housing category, that's, that's your starting point. From that, you subtract, uh, the anticipated production of ADU units, pipeline projects, and site support, supporting low income housing based on there. HCD math and what's assumed to be the support, affordable housing is generally sites which have at least a density of thirty units per acre. Been under a prior shared plan and housing element. We didn't support that, so we didn't have any sites that met that obligation. And as a result, you come up with a total of a thousand and twenty four units, which the city needs to plan for adequate sites to, to accommodate buy right. Or ministerial processing thereof. So in the, in the buy right housing overlay, uh, again, the city has to allow for buy right permit processing. It's not for all projects, but when they do, uh, provide at least twenty percent of those units, they make them affordable to lower income households. Uh, the city also has to permit exclusively residential units, which means that if a developer of their own option. Chose to go and elect or build an exclusively residential project, they could do so. And when, whenever a mixed use project is built within the buy right housing overlay. Uh, at least fifty percent of the floor area of that project has to be dedicated to the, to a residential component. So you can't do a token amount of, um, residential, largely, um, uh, commercial mixed use project. It also requires the city to provide a combined capacity. So once you've identified those sites, which are going to be included in the, in the buy right housing overlay. It combined, all the media add up to the regional, to, to our, our, our lower income housing shortfall. That's that one thousand twenty four, as mentioned previously. Now, in selecting sites, there's just really two rules. You can only select sites that support at least sixteen dwellings. You can't just pick like single family homes to meet the obligation. Or single family sites, and they have to have a, a density of at least thirty minutes to the acre. So, yeah, just to kind of frame up this section. Similar to the, the, for the affordable housing overlay, so we have several key policy. similar to the affordable house overlay except we have several key policy decisions to consider. The first is, is it important for the city to protect those areas which are mixed use? Or that require, that include a mixed use requirement? Or to minimize the number of sites which are going to now be subject to a ministerial or buy right permit process? So these are kind of ways of framing the options which we present in the report. Because this is a key consideration of which of those options might be preferred. The second question is, where is it most important for the city to retain its discretionary review, I should say, rather than buy right review? So if we want to retain discretionary permit processes, is it more important that we preserve that option in single family neighborhoods? Where neighbors might come out and want to comment on the application that might no longer be an option? Or particular sites of community significance, this could be your fries electronics, your prairie yard. When those projects come forward, the housing development project, they'll be larger, denser projects, which will be visible to every member of our community. So it's a key consideration as well. So with that, in the report, we presented really three, three different approaches or options that may be considered. The first is to try to maximize the reuse site inventories, the sites which we have to allow for ministerial processing because they're included prior housing elements. So we try to maximize those, but then also select those sites with the highest density. So this is like possibly your fries, possibly prairie yards. As a benefit of that, we could, we would minimize the sites which may be subject to buy right permit process. But as a consequence, again, the number of significant projects might not come before the planning commissioner council for review. It would also impact a greater number of mixed use sites. Again, some of those sites which I've mentioned, like fries and like the prairie yard, would otherwise be required to have a mixed use component which would no longer be required. As an alternative, just really flip side of the same. Instead of pursuing the highest density sites, the city can pursue some of the slower density sites to meet the obligation requirements. This could result in sites in near to single family residential neighborhoods or residential neighborhoods allowing for buy right permit processes, they wouldn't really have the opportunity to comment on it. Examples may include, say, like Lululemon or Virginia projects, which we recently received. I think had pre-applications at some point without introducing comments or comments on those. And again, some of those sites do also require mixed use, less so than the first category, but there would be the impact there. As an alternative, another alternative that the city may, may consider, instead of focusing on high density, low density sites, or even the reuse inventory, trying to maintain as much discretion or authority as we can, we could simply seek to try to protect those areas of the city which have a mixed use ground floor requirement by not including those within this buy right housing overlay. We have demonstrated how, under one approach, one set of sites selected, that nearly all sites with a mixed use requirement could be avoided. With the exception of one. And broadly speaking, mixed use, it's more than just providing a retail sales tax base in the ground floor. It does lend to a community image of the site. It does provide for access to amenities. It was a big discussion point, as I recall, in the general planning and housing element, that there had been a particular site, the milk farm dairy site in Santa Monica area, that we wanted to preserve a mixed use component in that area. Because it provided a resource to individuals in it that would be seeking that community resource. Something to consider as well. As a con, obviously, as a flip side of the other two, this third option would not try to maximize our reuse sites. And as a result, more sites would be subject to a buy right or ministerial permit process that would otherwise be obligated by the city.
I think that's the previous section, the ones we have to mark as, obviously, we're at the previous housing elements, they weren't developed.
Yeah, so the sites you're seeing depicted here on the screen, so these are those sites which were either included in the prior housing element, which were a non vacant site, or in the case of, I think, one property on the element, used in two or more consecutive planning years, had vacant. So these are the, those are locked in, these are going to be subject to a buy right permit process. But twenty percent or more of those units are made affordable to lower income households. By comparison, the buy right housing overlay, we have greater discretion of picking exactly which sites we want to include. Try to overlap those to the greatest extent feasible, or you could try to meet other policy objectives like avoid the next two sites. So that, that really brings us to the conclusion of the section. We're going to stop for a public comment first. And then open the questions.
Alright, I'll open the public hearing. It's going to be in the room, is anyone online? Close public hearing. Okay, let's go in same orders before, questions, questions and round of feedback.
I'm going to figure out how to make this question on trial. It's the thing we're biasing on for decision making. Passing this overlay now, training us. Like, the question I have is, if eight years from now, we don't get this housing built, is that like a large problem that just being compliant today? Like, is there, is there any reason we should get a map? If it's just more likely, it won't result in affordable houses being built? Then if we choose this one that maybe gives us the most discretion on these major properties that we've managed? Basically, like, I just don't know, are we trying to make this choice today on basis of our discretion? Or should we try and make this choice based on what do we think is most likely going to generate affordable housing down the road? Do you understand what my question is? But like, it's, it's in this space of like, I just don't understand, what is the main principle we're trying to make?
Yeah, so I'm going to help, I can try and help you frame it.
Thank you.
So if we do go back to the housing element, when we started, we did, you're sort of two principles coming down to city council. Which was say, do everything you can to help housing become in the city, affordable housing. Two, we want housing that fits the camp. And to an extent, we need, we need oversight to make sure that happens. A lot, a lot of the objective standards was to make it clear, make it clear on the outset, you know, these are the standards you can adhere to. But again, those principles were sort of driving the housing element, general plan of the objective standards. So I guess with this, there is a bit of a trade off. I mean, you just had a discussion, or discussions, hey, what can we do that helps affordable housing development? And as Chair Bucklander mentioned, hey, if it's ministerial, it'll go through a lot faster, a lot more affordable housing. So those, having discretionary review and ministerial could have some trade offs. That being said, I know in general, as I think mentioned by Christian Gray, folks in the community usually like to know what's happening in their community. Usually want a right to go to a hearing and applying if housing to their neighborhood. And so the question here, those are trade offs. Are there areas of the city where, you know, the city should maintain that neighbors should be noticed? It's not just a ministerial process or a project that meets that twenty percent affordability. I think the last point, I think you're hitting, I might have gotten wrong, David, this was, if we don't produce enough affordable housing, is there worse trade offs ahead? I can't think of any now, camels with any other city hasn't met its reading requirements, as for subjects. If at some point in the future, we build enough housing to meet our reading, there are actually more protections for discretionary review. I don't think at this point, or Stephen might notice, there are further penalties at this point. Continue on the path we continue already.
For the major sites, we talked about, for example, what are we, what are we saying? That's something that goes in front of planning commission because it is a, like, potentially multi-family development or like, what, say?
So as of present, so we established the permitting processing procedures for our housing development projects ordinance. And projects which are under, I think it's five units, are decided upon by the community development director. Over five units is the planning commission. So generally, even fries electronics, when it comes forward, would be really decided upon by the planning commission, except on appeal, the city council. The exception being, of course, sites which are over five acres, which happen to be fries electronics would meet that qualification, which go to council for a decision. So not to say both, but just effectively, those are thresholds, so up to five, five to infinite. With the exception of when you have five acres or more, those are the clear permit thresholds. So what we'd be largely doing is giving that up. Instead of these products, these products go into a public hearing process with public comment, and let the developer know their thoughts and feelings on a particular project. Provide feedback, which could then help them form conditions of approval imposed on a project. These products would essentially be subject to a checklist. They meet the checklist of objective requirements, they pass right through the zoning clearance process, and then subsequently submit for building terms and for issuance. So the first time, other than if the city were to do a courtesy review noticing process, for someone, some, some members of public would care about a project would be when they start seeing hammer swung, and the project going vertical.
Makes sense. My last one, and I'm delving back from the hypotheticals. Let's say we do this overlay, we have a plan, you know, a plan here. Flash forward like eight years, and nobody builds enough units, like, what is the, what is the? We could just stay in our current state in terms of, like, maybe the penalties we're in, in terms of restrictions we can offer. Like, what is that? What, what happens if eight years from now, we haven't built enough units? Or whatever, I'm saying, I'm saying eight years, what is the date of compliance we're looking at for this?
Yeah, so twenty, twenty twenty three, twenty thirty one is our housing element, six cycle review period. In this last regional housing needs allocation cycle, they did not assign, say, at this proportioned number of housing units based on a failure to meet a prior housing on the cycle does not mean that won't be part of the methodology on the next assignment. Right? To Director Eastwood's prior comment, I mean, we are already subject to SB thirty five provisions. We wouldn't otherwise be subject to, if the city was meeting or exceeding its regional housing needs allocation. So you're already seeing a consequence of not meeting a regional housing needs allocation. That said, I'd broadly say that these tools that you're seeing before you, the reuse overlay and the buy right housing overlay, there is a number of different ways the city could try to incentivize or build or provide for affordable housing and meet its regional housing needs allocations. These are very specific, purpose driven overlays, which are intended to meet very clear statutory state law requirements. I wouldn't try, I wouldn't necessarily recommend trying to use these as tools. Necessarily to go outside that, because they could confuse the legal requirements with the city's separate objectives or other program. Intent, as previously mentioned, the housing element includes over a hundred and something thirty different, different programs. You're seeing only three of them tonight, there's more to come. And you may feel differently once these products start coming, exactly how you might want to curate and control certain aspects of projects. Let's just see how these play out as well.
That is very clear, fine, thank you. Christian Gray?
Yes, yes, Stephen, thanks for all this. Just, just to clarify again, so we have to do a buy right overlay, so that's required.
Correct, so both, both of these overlays you're seeing, for either reuse and the buy right, are both mandatory programs?
Okay, yeah, another reuse, okay, and that's, that's why it's so hard. You know, I hate that first question with the or, instead of the word and, you know, it's kind of like they're both important, potentially, but let's get more into discussion that question, so I don't think I have any questions, thanks.
So I'm a little concerned. So could you, first of all, explain to me about, about retaining buy right, what is that?
Yes, probably correct the supply wall on it. It's, it's really retaining discretionary review is what we're aiming to do. Those, those are type on, in the particular slots.
So where should the city maintain, a housing project has to go through a process where it goes through a hearing and you have the right. We have less. Versus the ministerial process where it goes through staff, looks at it only, not necessarily people will be noticed, permits will be issued.
So the buy right review is the ministerial review?
Right, I was wanting to say.
Okay, so these are the two questions you're asking us. Is it more important? Yeah, so. And I guess my question about mixed use is, is that, are we, are you asking us to tell, give you our position on, on, on how important is to, to insist on mixed use whenever possible, is that what? You know, I, I mean, we used to do it a lot, right? And it was like, if it's, if it's, if it's on this, if it's in this location, it's got mixed use. That, that's cha, I, I guess that requirement is, has changed, or or we're looking at changing that requirement so that they, developers can build a development without mixed use? In areas where we would normally want it to expect mixed use?
Maybe if I ref, so it's kind of the problem statement, which the buy right housing overlay is trying to solve. City has to find at least a sufficient number of sites to allow for the buy right or ministerial review process of a thousand twenty four minutes. So what's being posed is a, is a prompt, is, it's kind of coming down to principles. Which, in, what is the methodology that staff should be using to go about deciding which sites are the, are the best to be included? Presented in the report, three different approaches that may be taken. Those are kind of being synthesized down to these kind of two key policy calls being asked on the screen that will help guide us staff. So that when we come back with actual sites selected, those sites which we've selected best reflect the, the goals, the priorities of the commission. So one approach would be to say, hey, we want to preserve and protect wherever we've retained a ground floor, say, commercial component, mixed use requirement. So try to avoid those sites, and it's more important to us to avoid those sites than it is for us to try to retain, say, a public hearing process. So those projects could go through a staff level review process, still retaining the requirement for a mixed use requirement, but not be subject to a public hearing.
So I, I guess, I guess my, my question is, I guess the question then arises is, you, say you have a potential, you have a potential development, and it could easily be a ministerial, easily be a ministerial thing where you could say, that's fine. And, and yet, yet, it, it's, it's in a location where if we had our druthers, we'd want it to be mixed use, but the developer doesn't want it to be mixed use. Where does that leave you from a ministerial point of view? Do you say, I mean, do you have the authority to say, oh, it's going to be mixed use?
It's an objective requirement, so the project would be compelled to comply with it unless it met, unless it was pursuant to state density bonus laws or other concessions or waivers to alleviate the requirement, or the event was placed within this new buy right housing overlay we're discussing, it met a minimum twenty percent affordable, provided, set aside twenty percent units to lower income households. So if it's in the overlay, they could alleviate themselves at that requirement without even being a density bonus project. Granted, if you're doing twenty percent affordable, probably going to be doing that anyways, but that's beside the point.
And if we decide it's more important to protect mixed use requirements, that basically means it's going to come to us, and then we're going to make a decision on some, on that kind of example, rather than you making the decision and staff?
No, we're kind of deciding upfront. So the areas, so the specific sites to include, which we would then be alleviating from a mixed use requirement now, right?
So we would get down to that detail. So we would get down to that detail.
We hear. Or right now, we're just looking for general direction, which is kind of why we restructured the, this, bringing back down the principles as opposed to individual sites. Based on the feedback to provide us, we'll be returning the map, because we think best for clutch here.
Okay. I didn't have any particular questions. Who else? Uh, I think staff is getting this right. I think option three makes sense to preserve our ability to weigh in on the most preeminent properties in the town. And the other two maps that were presented, I think, sort of bypassed that. And just again, judging from the commentary I've seen or public interest, the one I believe the public would want us to do is preserve the ability to weigh in on those. Particularly like ones centered around like gateway entrances to the city, fries, prude yard. So, uh, to me, option three made sense. And, um, I guess just to your question, it's aligned with the question, but like preserving mixed use, uh, particularly in these like mega developments, I think, uh, if at all possible is, is a good thing to focus on. Just to have sort of a vibrant, uh, development. And again, you've heard me say it before, just avoid these big modelists next to concrete with nothing else going on, um, that I hope we can avoid. That's it.
I agree with Commissioner Davis. And I think, yeah, thanks for that answer to Commissioner Zister's question, Stephen. That did help me put it in perspective too. But yeah, I think definitely think, uh, three is the, the, the best way to go. And I, you know, don't need me to say it, but we definitely don't want to ever approve something that would allow a fries site to just get ministerial permit, obviously. You know, I, you know, the city council, of course, wouldn't go for that. I don't want to speak for them, but, uh, as Commissioner Davis was just saying, you know, with the, the big major sites, obviously we need that, need that, we need that. And on the other hand, oh, what Commissioner Bookbinder especially have said, we've all said that the ministerial permits are very good setup overall. So, uh, you know, this certainly makes sense in a lot of, uh, situations and with the state law and our laws now, there is a lot of cases where certainly ministerial permits will certainly suffice. Thanks.
But yeah, I, I, I think I agree too. I, I'm, um, you know, I, I think that, um, there's an awful lot of, you know, places where we, we like to think that mixed use makes sense, but it not necessarily, it could live without. I mean, I think there are places where, um, there's, you know, where, where, uh, I make the example of the Campbell Plaza Shopping Center. Obviously, whatever, if, if something happens there, um, depending on what it is, I mean, it, it, it conceivably, if, if they're keeping part of the shopping center and then putting in some residential in the back or on the side, if you've already got commercial, maybe you don't need commercial in that building. So I mean, i- there's a possibility that it could be mixed use or not mixed use. But that's obviously the most likely because it, it is a, what I, what I consider to kind of a district. We have, we have districts in Campbell and that's one of them. You know, like, like, like Kirkwood Plaza, like Prune Yard downtown. So, so that, that's to me a, a commercial district and, and with, with nearby residential where people can gather. And so, so obviously someplace like that where we would want to be able to determine whether it would make sense to, uh, have mixed use. I think we should have that opportunity to do that. You know, I mean, even as an example, a- a- actually an opposite example is across the street we have on the map, the, uh, a nursery. I think that's a nursery. I, I could argue that that doesn't need to be mixed use, even though it's across the street, as we've already got plenty retail. And that could just be a big residential building. So, so, uh, you know, it, it depends on one's perspective, but, but, uh, and, and, and there's, um, there's, uh, there's other, plenty of other examples where, um, it looks like it would make sense to have mixed use, but maybe, maybe considering the importance of the overriding importance of putting up residential is, uh, is, uh, you know, overrides mixed use. But I, I still believe that we should have, uh, the opportunity to weigh in on that. So I would, I would agree with the other commissioners in that respect. And I would look forward to seeing more detail in the future and being able to, you know, be able to get more specific on, on sites.
Thank you. I concur with everyone else, option three seems like the best idea. I don't see a ministerial review as being a downside. Ministerial review means more housing produced, which is what we're all trying to shoot for. More broadly, I don't think it proves these projects, we can protest them. To be honest, neighbors do not show up unmasked to support low market rate housing. And noting that if we're concerned that the fries would get ministerial review, we have, you know, objective standards to express what we want. And if we put forward the, our own, uh, affordable housing overlay, they might just use, as noted, might just use the ministerial, uh, review option through there if we decide to provide, which I think we should. Yeah, it, I think definitely, we went through a lot to talk about during the general plan process about how we want to do mixed use. So I think being able to protect those requirements is definitely more important than trying to maximize the amount of discretion that the city can still have. Went to to a lot of trouble to make sure that the cities will be expressed in objective ways and I think we should trust that. That's my opinion. Do you have what you need from the commission?
Yeah, thank you, commissioners. Just FYI, I think Stephen has something to say, just go to city council next week. See if he's not going to spend all my as we finish the report tomorrow. Be this into the council report and again, your recommendations will be presented to the council next week.
Thank you for all your work. Thanks a lot. Oh, and thanks to, um, Ms. Meek, the intern who did the review. That was very impressive for her, thanks. Okay, so I believe we have next on the agenda is ad hoc committee updates. We are done with that too. Okay. And three, ad hoc subcommittee suspicion, I believe Fisher Fields has a PowerPoint presentation.
Fancy.
That's who I am right now.
We said it high standard.
You did. Uh, just a couple of slides. So goal of today is to give you a quick overview, consider this a preview of what I think we'll spend a lot more time on in two weeks. Uh, if you go to the next slide, uh, just to recap what we're trying to do here with the economic development subcommittee, streamline permitting for land uses. There's a hundred and eighty-six of them today that permitted, condition permitted, prohibited, couple cases administrative. They're applied across our five zones and they were put together, uh, Camp Carter and I, along with city staff. We looked at the last ten years condition use permits. We looked at what other local cities are requiring. Talked to businesses and city staff, put together a set of recommendations. Go to the next slide. The new thing we haven't showed you before is the guiding principles that we want to pass on to city council as well, explaining what are we doing here? I think the number one is just sort of defining like, what did we get involved in? Like why, there were a hundred and eighty-six permits, we're not updating all of the points picked. You see the first bullet again, just talks about what would be seen like on the ground in these planning commission meetings, what's been coming in front of us that really resulted in, you know, uncontroversial unanimous approvals, those really informed, uh, you know, the initial set that we looked at. We also have looked at the city's broader economic development plans to see what kind of businesses is that encouraging that we streamlined and support. And then finally just seeing like cable board by, you know, a bunch of other towns. If we are the odd man out, having this strange requirement, like, is there actually a good reason this is something we could streamline if, you know, down the block, there is a music store and for some reason we're, we're having to get it acquired? What, there's a couple of instances, and we'll talk about one of the day, where we're not touching something right now and think there's like something we can do long term. So, uh, we'll talk about wireless telecommunications in a second, but what I think is good is we're doing this update this year, you know, this, this, uh, over time. The third thing that we're doing, uh, and I think this was great by design, we're trying to avoid including something that is like a voice pill or super controversial in the set. I think if we just do the set proposing, we'll streamline the most popular cases for not only developers, but also citizens who've come to this forum. We will make things more efficient for the planning commission for city staff and there's lots of benefits. We're not trying to touch like for real issues like downtown sort of alcohol, obviously has attracted a lot of commentary. The other one that I initially proposed was wireless telecommunications, staff recommended, probably should do a more thorough update given the constituents and certain nuances there, which I'm comfortable with. So I just another good example, we got some retail feedback, the city could be more open to this, but I think in general that has been a touchy subject. And so that's another one, we're just not. That was not. So that's just not what we're touching here. I mean, in general, we got not now used for me. Uh, we're trying to come up with a set of things, uh, that I think will just be broadly popular, efficient updates that, you know, help us develop the city faster, the uses that people want to see. The last thing, and this is like really the new thing, and I, I really appreciate what staff has done, is they took Commissioner Camp Carter and I's input, that was sort of obviously not informed by many decades of experience working on municipal code and then used, uh, tools to sort of protect the intent. So the next slide, we have a couple of examples of like, what did we show up and ask for? And then the column to the right shows, okay, great, how, how would this be actually applied in municipal code? So go to the next slide, and apologize for the font, it's a little small. So, uh, first item, medical services, for example. So what we came in and said, and we've talked about this one, I think, uh, what Commissioner Camp Carter and I said is, hey, this is the number four most approved condition use permit. These have always been popular, uh, we heard from multiple retail brokers, this is a popular Bay Area use, it's unusually hard to do in Campbell. So our ask was to streamline the permits in the commercial zone. If you go to the right, you can see the recommendation, which is to permit that by right professional office. Uh, and then there is, uh, you want to hear about preserving that by right up to a certain size threshold and then, uh, having them sort of located fifty feet away from the right of way and occupying less than ten percent of the gross floor. So this, I think, was a great way that they tackled sort of former concentration problem, which is, you know, if we just streamlined the permitting for this with like Hamilton Plaza suddenly turned into like a dental, you know, haven't. And I think this will preserve a certain amount of discretion still that'll make sure that we don't all of a sudden like lose plot on certain complexes. So that's the first example. The second example is about thrift stores, uh, if you go over to the left again, which again, multiple retail brokers said, uh, said, hey, what's up with this one? Because they were expressly prohibited. And they were either expressly prohibited or depending on the zone, required a condition use permit. And retail brokers said, why are we doing this? This is a popular use, particularly with younger folks. Why are we making this so hard? And so we came in and said, could we streamline these? Campbell has secondhand thrift stores, they're popular. And the staff recommendation is to actually sort of condense the, uh, item with a different listing. And so basically, if you're operating a secondhand thrift store, it doesn't take donations, right? You're treated like a retail store permitting is streamlined. If you want to open up a donation center, which I do think is, it backs like, how many people are coming there parking, other issues that still retains the CUP. So again, I think the staff, so staff did a great job sort of taking our intent and then crafting something that streamlines the primary input, but then preserves discretion on, uh, like a large donation center all of a sudden opening up, uh, in some way, like here. Uh, two more examples. Tutoring centers, um, this was a staff identified use, uh, it's aligned with principle number one. And so this one just permits them by right up to a certain size threshold. Again, I think this is very logical. This is one where you look in the code, you look at our past condition use permits, we've approved four of these over the past ten years. This is like a cumin or said, you know, a very non-controversial use. And for some reason in our code right now, we've just made it hard for people. Again, there's the over concentration clause, so we won't have a Hamilton Plaza that is purely small tutoring centers. And so, uh, I feel like this is a nice update to the city code. Last one, just to give you an example of something we are not doing per the principle of just having a set of recommendations that should be sort of broadly popular in efficiencies, wireless telecommunications facilities. We have covered a lot of these in, uh, this forum and had come in and said, hey, why not? This was like our ask, like, why don't we just allow, uh, benign updates to be streamlined and new towers to require CPs? And then Stephen spent about fifteen minutes telling me some nuances about our municipal code, cross with our zoning and all of the different sort of things that play into just towers. And I think I became convinced this was a suitably dense topic, uh, that likely didn't really fulfill some of our other asks, like, uh, health maintenance. So I am comfortable with staff's recommendation that this is something we're not trying to, you know, brush through, given, uh, these towers have attracted some amount of So if you go to the next slide, what we're going to do in two weeks is look at the whole list. Uh, I think there's between fifteen and twenty of these and discuss as a group, you can see what we came up with. If you want to look at the entire set just for fun, uh, shoot me a message and I can send you the big monster list of like all of the uses.
Yeah. How many are we looking at modifying in this round?
Fifteen, twenty of the hundred.
Okay, so originally it was four and like it's expanding considerably.
The four I showed at the previous meeting were the four most popular, the CUP. And then we, Matt and I sent the subsequent set of about eleven over to the city. And then the city has added, I don't know, four to six to that. That's, that's how we got up to number wrap.
Right, you said fifteen to twenty.
I think that's right.
Okay. Okay.
So we'll look at that next time, uh, discuss as a group, see how we're feeling, uh, vote on it. If that passes, that would then go on to the city council to be considered as part of the broader economic development proposal. Uh, I think at this point, we hold it on in January, like early twenty-four. So do you have any questions on any part of the show?
Had a couple of quick, uh, quick thoughts, uh, to top the top, which you actually could talk, you already thought about staff, but the, in terms of the medical, uh, uses and everything, and I know we always approve them, but I, I think the one wrinkle that might come in at times is if there was any, uh, gases or dangerous substances that the medical use might use, or, or even medications that they, that they administer or give out. I think that might get a little tricky. I don't know how you handle that, but it would be so seldom. And, and then the other point that comes to mind in terms of the thrift shops and, uh, and also the tutoring is, I, I don't know. As with liquor establishments, we don't want too many in one location. So I guess that would be the same. Thrift shops. And then just one quick thought on the, when you said the massage, we use the massage parlor or massage. I guess you just really mean any kind of adult type of uses. Who's that getting?
So doing them in reverse order, there is a, there are two sort of similar uses. There was a use that was about like spa services and then, I mean, again, I'm not a planner. I think we have a use that was just massage or is massage rolled? Yeah, that's right. So we have a use that is literally just massage, which is not theoretically like adults in nature, but because of sordid history is controversial and that, so we're just saying that one, like we're not. Yeah. For tutoring and medical and some, many of the other ones you will see in the list have an over concentration thing, which is basically like, if you're the first one in a shopping center, you're good. If by adding yourself to the shopping center, all of a sudden, ten to twenty percent of the shopping center is just this use that triggers more. And then on the medical one, I think, I think the answer to this, you should say it, but like, we're not changing like, like, I believe that medical uses in general have a lot of requirements around gases and waste disposal. We're not doing anything to any of those. It's just purely like, if you've met all the other requirements, do you have to show up to the planning commission? Or not? I think that's, that.
My question about the benefits stuff is that I, I, I think the assumption before, before it ever gets to us, there are certain offices, people are getting injections or in case of dental office, in case B twelve, getting injections. I see, I see there's an urgent care facility now, Hamilton Plaza. It's like, they must do some stuff there. And, and so I assume that even that, that there are certain requirements in the application, they have to prove themselves to have, you know, the right personnel and the right state, you know, whatever.
It sounds like this is staff approval for specifically for medical. And I just talk about, you know, selling widgets. I'm talking about if you're, if you're injecting people with chemicals.
Yeah, I mean, my understanding.
There, there must be, the city must have a few, a process where they ask for certain things, right?
So typically, it's not a land use issue. That's a sort of licensing, health, environmental health, state license, ensuring you have chemicals, the fire marshal or fish that make you store it properly. All those things are addressed through licensing process, but typically not on the land. I mean, usually this land use tool is like, whoa, is this a use where neighbors will get nervous if it's nearby? Generally, all of those happen through license.
I didn't have any further questions, just as exciting work. Oh, actually, yeah, I actually did have a question. I'm, I'm following up with doing parking stuff. I've been looking at the, the four just to, they haven't been as many parking modification permits as have the issue use permits, but I think it would be reasonable for me, since you have expanded list, to go back and see what, if there are other types of parking permits that would change to be these. This is actually ministerial.
Yep. I can, I'll, I'll send you the draft list now so you can look at it in advance. The other thing, the slide said, just to make it explicit, I'm also going to send this to the retail brokers now so that they can see like, okay, this is how we'd apply it in code. Do they have any feedback or commentary? Cause several of them like literally are like representing, you know, the prune yard or Hamilton Plaza. So I think that'll be a good chance to get input of like, how does this sort of land with them?
Thank you very much for your presentation. Actually, slides rather well into mine, which is the relevant parking stuff. So Christian Campgar and I met with staff who were very, very helpful, suggested that we split up restaurant uses. Instead of being one big use, the way we define restaurants is not really sensible. The IT suggests splitting it to fast casual, quality, high turnover slash sit down, fast food, coffee or donut shop, which is a different taxonomy that the city uses. Staff generally approved of the approach. It was also suggested that we split our standards into applying to walkable and non-walkable areas, kind of like what Los Gatos does. They have standards for downtown and out of downtown. So I'm currently redoing the analysis to only consider parking modification permits that were granted in walkable, but non-AB twenty ninety-seven areas to see what kind of things would be streamlined. So I've been looking at only four uses, but I'll see the thing for the others. I expect this will probably, probably be, I expected this to be a less invasive change, but given that we're going to be possibly changing the definition of restaurants, that may be a little bit more complicated, but I should. That, that's one says you can't require parking within a half mile of a plant or existing truck stop. So that, that's like forty percent of the city. I was actually kind of surprised that not all of the businesses were within that area. But so far, the ones I checked were actually within what we define as a walkable area. The ones that were not in the AB twenty ninety-seven areas. So this, despite AB twenty ninety-seven, this still does matter for permits. So, yeah, I'll be following up on that. Hopefully I will be able to have something tentative for, probably not the next meeting, but maybe one after that. Is there anything that the community development director would like to report?
Super quick. So we do have four semi-permanent parklet structures going up. If you look at them, they all very look semi-permanent, they look very permanent. And the contractor estimates, they should be done by next week. So if you'd like to take a stroll through downtown, this is in front of the Keys, track three of three sixty, Katie Blooms and Flights.
Like a total of five.
At the end of the day, I think we had one that almost pulled permits that pulled out, so we just ended up with four.
Okay.
At some point, we'll circle back and see council, see if they'd like to open up for next round, but.
Can I ask about? They're, they're using, you know, great concrete. That's the, the, the major outside. Is that gonna just stay gray? You know, is, is it gonna be straight color? It's just gonna stay gray as color?
I believe so. Yes, I'll have to look at, we have the renderings.
Talk to the civic improvement, we should see if they want to do the Google Bureau contest.
Look at the
I know they got, I know they got wood. I know they got wooden paddling and, and metal, black metal stuff and things like that. I was just wondering about the outside being a.
I think that was a lot less, but they go on.
No, I was just gonna mention, there, there is a panel that circulates outside. It has a it's over an homage to either an orchard or water cabbage.
A little, little tree cut out thing?
Yes. Two last things, our environmental program specialist starts next Monday. This is a person who's been overseeing the climate action plan. We're very happy that person's coming on board. Her name is Tiffany Hudson. And wish us luck. We had oral boards for our housing manager position. Passed on a few candidates. We're scheduled to interview those candidates next week. Very much hope we find a good candidate we could offer, hire and bring on board in the next month.
Very much. With that, we'll adjourn to our next meeting of October twenty fourth, twenty twenty-three. Thank you, everybody, for your time. Have a good night.